Text me if you're not attending. But I want to add your number.
Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we please have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Ms. Antellus. Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a call.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted May 25, 2012. One at all schools, two Home News Tribune, three Cranberry Press, and four filed with the Clerk of the municipality. Seeing no student board members here. Before we continue with our meeting, I have a very sad announcement to make. Many of you have been attending our meetings for quite a while and have heard Mr. Klein talk about his wife and the problems that she's been going through and the hospitalizations and the difficult time that he and his family have. And it's with very deep sadness that I tell everyone that his wife Linda passed away about two and a half, three weeks ago from cancer. And I'm sure all of us wish his family and himself the very best in the coming days and years, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, this time, Mr. Tesler.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to make a closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: Oak Tree Principal Interviews. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time the matters have been resolved.
Is there a second by Mr. Klein? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then we will go into closed session. We added a closed session to our agenda because we have, we'll be conducting Oak Tree Principal Interviews. We did not want our interviewees to have to sit through our whole meeting, so we decided to add a closed session at the beginning. We will also have a closed session at the end of the meeting. So at this time, the Board will go into closed session to conduct interviews. Good evening again. At this time, the Board will reconvene into public session. We will go to number six on the agenda, the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we will go to the approval of the minutes for public meeting of March 1st, 2012. Motion and second?
Second.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Klein. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approval of the minutes for the closed session of March 1st, 2012?
Second.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Masters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr., you're opposing or abstaining? The closed session for March 1st. Minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You.
Have you covered the minutes of the open meeting, March 1st?
Yes.
I just did.
I'd like to put in a correction.
Okay.
In the public forum, there, at the, down at the bottom, there is a great confusion.
What page would it be?
That, we're on page 66. They talk about the Middlesex County Academy. The only Middlesex County Academy we have in Middlesex County is operated by the Middlesex Regional Educational Service Commission. And this is for people who are in desperate straits. They make one more mistake and they go to Yardville. And we have sent people up to Middlesex County Academy for doing dumb things like pulling alarms and bomb threats and other things like that. These people who are talking about Middlesex County Academy really are talking about the Middlesex County Vocational Technical School and the subordinate part of it, which is the Scientific Engineering and Mathematics Academy, which is on the campus of Middlesex County College. And they have put the title Middlesex County Academy on it, which is wrong, and we need to get that as a matter of record.
Mr. Leary, that's corrected to the Middlesex County Technical School.
Fine.
Vocational Technical School.
Vocational Technical.
It's really, I mean, if you take a look at the score, it's phenomenal. I mean, they turn out absolutely, you know, they get five stars after them. I see Jeff Gorman smiling.
So noted.
Okay, so the closed session for March 1st, 2012. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approval of the minutes for the public meeting of March 22nd, 2012?
So moved.
Mr. Klein.
Second.
Mr. Tesler. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Braverman is abstaining. The approval of the minutes for the closed session of March 22nd, 2012?
So moved.
Mr. Klein, Mr. Chiarella. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Braverman. The approval of the minutes for the special public meeting of April 23rd, 2012?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Leary?
I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The approval of the minutes for the public meeting of April 25th, 2012? Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Masters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And the last one is the approval of the minutes for the closed session of April 25th, 2012. Mr. Chiarella.
Second.
Mr. Masters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Then we have passed all the minutes. And we will go to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hamilton?
Thank you. I don't know if you've had a chance to read your email today, but we did receive the air sampling report from Dr. Lynch today in reference to Applegarth Elementary School. And I won't read the entire report, but I'll just share with you a quick summary. Attached, please find, the laboratory results from the May 23rd, 2012 indoor air quality monitoring and air sampling for mold and other dust matter conducted at Applegarth. The purpose of this sampling was to determine if airborne and dust concentrations were within normal range, given the current construction and renovation activities occurring at the school. And the conclusions essentially say that based on this report, it is my opinion within a reasonable degree of scientific certainty that the air quality was normal, given the construction activities occurring at the school during sampling. Fresh air supply was normal. No elevated carbon monoxide was detected, et cetera. He does recommend that after construction and after the work on the gym floor, that the tests be repeated. But I did email the full report to you. Again, if you haven't had a chance to read your email, it is in your email. And the water results are forthcoming. Thank you, Mike. Mr. Ventrella is also recommending that we postpone the student orientation for Applegarth. There's a delay in the furniture delivery. As soon as we get a confirmation on that delivery and the setup, a new date will be set. Having said that, moving on to the Superintendent's Personnel Report. Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the Superintendent that Personnel Items A through BB be approved by roll call vote.
Mr. Chiarella.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tesler. Is there any comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton? Mr. Masters?
Just a slight comment. A, again, just because I'm OCD, it's Mr. Theodore Mags?
Yes.
That was an error.
I just don't want that making its way into a plaque or something.
Good catch. Thank you.
And he will be very much missed at Oak Tree.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I've read 17.
Seeing no one, we will have a roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Items A through double B passes.
Thank you.
Adding another personnel item for your consideration that should be recorded as CC. It is recommended by the Superintendent that Patricia Dinsmore be approved as the principal of Oak Tree Elementary School at an annual salary of $108,641.89 effective July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Tesler. Any comments or questions on this motion? Mr. Klein?
Just would like to congratulate Patricia.
She hasn't been appointed yet, Mr. Klein.
Oh. Anyway, forget it. I rest my case.
Okay.
Well, we could have a roll call first.
Let's have a roll call.
Okay, we'll have a roll call.
Roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Mr. Braverman.
Oh.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
No.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Recuse.
He's still holding out.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion to letter CC passes.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, would you like to speak now?
No, I forgot what I was going to say. I know the whole process in finding a principal for Oak Tree was very difficult for the main committee and also for the candidates. And after last night, I don't know how many times those candidates were interviewed and had to go through the same thing all the time, Patricia always had a smile. She was always very positive. And what I like mostly about her is that she's a go-getter and doesn't let moss grow under her feet. And I'm very, very happy to vote for her and wish her a lot of luck. And I know that she'll do a great job for our district.
Unfortunately, by law, I'm not allowed to vote on this decision as Oak Tree is not in the realm of my voting power, but I would personally support Patty Dinsmore 100% in this position as a professional, dedicated, insightful, just go-getting type of personality that I think the parents and the staff should be very confident that they have a wonderful leader in place.
Anyone else? Mr. Tesler?
Just real quick, I'll be brief. I'd like to congratulate you, Patty. I wish you all the best.
Anyone else? Then I'd also like to extend my congratulations to Patty. We go back a long ways, and I know that you're going to do absolutely wonderful things for Oak Tree. It's difficult to follow in Mr. Ventrella's footsteps, so I wish you a lot of luck and extend our best wishes for much success in your future. Now we'll go to the Board Action Items.
Moving on to Board Action Items. Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the Superintendent that Board Action Items A through H be approved by roll call vote.
Mr. Chiarella.
Second.
Second by Mr. Masters. Are there any comments or questions for the Superintendent? Mr. Klein?
Just that there's no report here on violations, student violations. Did we go through a month with no violations?
No. That'll be reported on the June 20th meeting.
Oh, okay. I figured it was too good to be true.
Anyone else? Roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through H passes.
That concludes the Superintendent's Report.
At this time, we will go to the Business Administrator's Report with Mr. Gorski.
Thank you. Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through L be approved by consent roll call. Please note that there were two items F erroneously typed into the report. Please identify the second F as an L. Second.
So, who was it? Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Tesler? Sorry. Any comments or questions for Mr. Gorski? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes on all but F. F8? Or F, if you can't break it out. I have to recuse myself on F8.
And recusing on the first F.
First F, primary F.
That's F, very good. So noted, thank you. Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items 8 through L passes.
Thank you. And that concludes your report.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, we will go to the Board President's Report, and I just have a few items. First, tonight was the annual National Honor Society Induction Ceremony, which took place at the High School Performing Arts Center earlier this evening. Usually, the board members have the opportunity to attend that, and obviously, we weren't able to tonight with this meeting scheduled, so we'd like to congratulate all of the inductees and wish them well. We've spoken many times about the EE4 New Jersey Grant this year. So on Thursday of this week, we will have our last District DPAC meeting, and we will be discussing the successes, maybe the failures of the grants and how well we did and how we can move forward from here. And our K-12 Supervisor of Grants and Testing recently participated in a panel discussion with the different pilot districts on the EE4 NJ Grant to compare and discuss different experiences and how it worked in other districts and how it compares to ours. So we look forward to seeing how it's going to work next year.
When will that presentation be made? Can board members attend?
I think it's already been made. I think she, I think it was, I know it was, I don't remember what date, but she participated it already.
Okay.
So we will be getting an update probably from her on Wednesday at the District DPAC meeting.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
And lastly, we had a really great opportunity recently at Woodland School. On May 22nd, there was a flag presentation, and I just wanted to read about the presentation. We had a Dr. Moss, M-O-S-S. He's a cardiothoracic surgeon from Howell, New Jersey, who recently served with the 628th Forward Surgical Team in Logar Province, Afghanistan. And on behalf of the soldiers of that surgical team, he came to Woodland School to present the American flag, an American flag, that was flown in honor of the students of Woodland School who graciously lifted their hearts when they sent gifts throughout the school year to those soldiers in the Forward Surgical Team. He also had his brother, who was an Iraqi veteran, come to the meeting with him. The students donated many items during the year. They collected a lot of things during the school year, sent it over to the soldiers in Afghanistan. They sent approximately 16 boxes of candies, cookies, movies, DVDs, toiletries, blankets, books, et cetera, a lot of different things. And at the end of the presentation, they had the opportunity for the students to ask questions. They did present an American flag. It was beautifully framed. It will be hanging in Woodland School. And they also presented the students and the staff with a framed picture of the 628th Forward Surgical Team to the staff and the students to show their appreciation for what the students have done for them during the year. And it was a very moving ceremony, and there were a lot of tears. It was just a very, very wonderful, moving opportunity. Mr. Leary?
If you would fact that the principal is a reservist in the Marine Corps, I think that probably were the Marines rather than soldiers that were in that combat.
That's what I have, soldiers.
So, okay, well, they're soldiers of the sea.
Okay. At this time, we will go to committee reports. Is there any board member that has a committee that they would like to report on? Okay, seeing, Mr. Leary?
Last week, at the, you know, on a Friday, they came out, the State Department of Education, with a whole new set of report cards, and they jiggered the books again. They, it's like going in football, and you know, you think you're getting towards the 80-yard line, they just moved the goalpost another 20 yards down the post. So, but Mike Gorski and I are going to have some fun.
Lucky Mike. Is there any other business by any member of, new business from members of the?
Go ahead, go first, I'm still writing something down.
Okay, we'll go to Mr. Klein.
Early in the meeting, I couldn't, I couldn't say anything. It was quite hard, but both myself and my family were very touched by the condolences and the visitation by many people from this district, including some of the parents. And I appreciate it. And it's something, I'd like to forget about the death, but the friendship and the caring is just, it's not something that I expected. And I deeply, deeply appreciate it, and so do my family. And thank you all.
Mr. Masters?
Couple weeks ago, I went to the School Board's Delegate Assembly. I'll keep it quick, because it's real exciting. A couple, honestly, a couple of the recommendations that were discussed and passed were, they're limiting the amount of meetings they have in a given year. They're moving from six to, I believe, three. They nominated a new board, a new set of officers. They're suggesting newer language for charter schools and that they should basically be held accountable to the same standards that non-charter schools are. There was a resolution about denying enrollment in any school based on, say, he had a standardized test, which also relates to the charter school issue. And they were, they were going to propose moving the, School Board petitioning towards September, September, October, instead of where they are now. That's about it.
Mr. Leary?
Who is your state senator, Dr. Hamilton?
Where I live?
Yeah.
Mendez.
Mendez?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was a lady who used to be a broadcaster in Philadelphia.
Yeah.
But anyway, she has proposed that the harassment, intimidation, and other characteristics be applied to teachers. This is going to be interesting, and I'm watching with great glee.
Anyone else? Okay, this time, we will go to 13, closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: Personnel, Discussion Related to the Superintendent's Evaluations, Student Matters, Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Incidents 124, 125, and 126. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. Motion? Mr. Chiarella, second.
Second.
By Mr. Klein. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And with all our apologies, because we don't usually normally have two closed sessions in one evening, the Board will now convene into closed session. Okay, at this time, we will go back into public session. We were at the public forum. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And we apologize for the lateness of the time.
Hi, Lara Getz, Lara Libros Getz, 5 Scott Drive, Monroe Township. I actually have two statements, one from my daughter, who I sent home long ago. So I don't know if there's time at the end for me to come back and just read her statement or have someone else do it for her. I'd appreciate it. I'm here speaking before the Board because my daughter Brooke Getz, a student with a 3.5 GPA, a student who should have been identified as at risk since the sixth grade, has failed her high school proficiency test in mathematics. I have asked the school system for additional support for her on numerous occasions, especially during this school year. I have about 20 emails, if anyone would like to, needs to see them at some point. I have met with the assistant principal, the principal, the assistant superintendent, the superintendent, and one of the four different guidance counselors that she has had in her three years in Monroe Township High School. But nothing really has been done. No genuine strategies have been offered, except that I should continue to pay for a tutor, and my daughter should continue to go to CMAC, which is offered every day after school for an hour. Even though my daughter worked hard throughout her high school career and achieved a very good GPA, how has she been able to earn As and Bs her whole entire life and be so ill-equipped to pass a standardized test? It is very evident that she struggles with math. It has been evident since the sixth grade, when she scored a 178 on the NJASK 6. She has been on the bubble since then, scoring a 200 on the NJASK 7 and a 204 on the NJASK 8. Is there no one in this entire district who is monitoring the students who are on the bubble? Like my daughter, I don't know that anyone has monitored her academic growth. Once you hit 200, she has passed or been proficient. Perhaps if she hadn't had a different guidance counselor each year. She's had four guidance counselors in three years. Perhaps if her name did not begin with the letter G, she would have had a consistent guidance counselor, and maybe someone would have picked up on this, or someone would have heard my pleas. The School Board, all of you, have approved policy. You have approved curriculums on your district website. I just want to read, just to make sure that we're clear, because I've done this same speech when I met with the assistant superintendent and superintendent. Your goal, your vision statements state that you're going to provide early interventions for all students who are at risk for not reaching their full potential. At every meeting this year, I have asked, what interventions have we done? What have we done to help this child? I'm asking now, once again, for help. There is a lot of blame, including my own. There's lots of blame that we can push around. I can go back every year. I can tell you details. I can show you emails. But at this point, can I finish my request?
Do you have a lot more to go?
No, not really. I'm almost done. I'm just going to give my two, I have two requests.
Okay.
Once again, these are my two requests. The test, because she has failed, she scored a 198, one question off. She is, she has to take the test on October 2nd. That is when it's given next for juniors who did not pass. If you go into the calendar and you figure out, she has about six sessions with her math teacher in this Senior Essentials Mathematics for children who have been, who did not pass the test. And it's her, I understand that she didn't pass, but we need to do something. And what I'm requesting of the district is that we form some remedial class over the summer to target the kids that have come up short. And maybe even if it's an hour a week with the teacher, or two hours a week, because right now, the way I'm looking at the schedule, she'll have six or seven sessions with her math teacher on that senior's essential to get them prepared for the October 2nd test. I don't think that's enough. She's failed already. I don't know how many did fail. It's not my business. I'm talking about my own. But I don't think, and I will plan on paying a tutor over the summer, but I think that we have to be accountable as well and maybe come up with a remedial class to help these kids that have not passed.
And what is your other question?
The other request is that we do not penalize her for failing the HESPA by taking away senior option. Not senior, opt-out, senior option. My daughter has applied for senior option to volunteer at Academy Learning. It was told to me today that it is a state law. It is not.
Okay, Dr. Hamilton, would you like to respond?
Yes. Hi, Mrs. Gatz, how are you?
Good evening.
Firstly, regarding your two requests, it would be irresponsible to be able to say to you at this point that-
I understand.
-that request is something that can be explored. Of course, you know, I'll speak with Mr. Goodall, we'll talk about the number of children, if there is such a need for that kind of remediation, and see if that's a viable option. It has not been budgeted, so that would, of course, then require a process that would engage the board. Regarding senior option, did you have that level of conversation with Mr. Goodall?
I did today. I mean, I actually, and I will say this, Mr. Goodall and Mrs. Cattelli-
Yes.
-Director of Guidance, met with me for about two hours today. They were very, you know, we had a long meeting about issues, and these were addressed. My husband has more of the data, because I knew I was going to be pressed to three minutes, but we contacted Middlesex County Superintendent today. We contacted a law office. There is no policy to disallow, there is no policy, there is no state law that does not allow a child who failed the HESPA to take senior option. So I do have the data to show it, so I can, and I know Mr. Goodall is not aware of it. He sent me something with it. We had a conversation. The paper he sent me was from Governor McGreevy in 2004, applying to New Jersey Business Industries, something, whatever it was, I checked. I contacted a lawyer, I contacted the county superintendent. There is no law to not allow her to do senior option. So that can, something that Mr. Goodall is not aware of, what I, the research I did after I met with him.
Well, I'd be interested in seeing the research you've gathered as well, and then we'll talk about that further, because I would certainly need to see all that data in order to be able to-
But my request to the board was, and that's why I'm here still till 11 o'clock at night, is I know that it's not budgeted. I know that it is, you know, but I, just because it's not budgeted, doesn't mean it's not warranted. And even numbers, even if it's one child, two children, I know that there's, I mean, we kind of have seen her whole career in a bubble. And we all sat back and didn't really give her that extra help that I think she needed, and I'm asking you now to do that. And I think that's my request, and that's what I'm, that's my request.
Okay, we will have Dr. Hamilton look into it, and thank you very much. Anyone else from the public?
Can I read my daughter's thing?
Will you do it?
When the public is done?
Sure.
Evening, Gatz, 5 Scott Drive. I guess I'm just going to present the law that Mr. Goodall sent to my wife earlier today, which is really just a recommendation guide from the McGreevy administration, and then all of the code sections that have anything to do with student, which is actually called the 12th Grade Option Program. The code sections for the school refer only that it be qualified workers, that they report back to the school and to receive credit, that the school advise the county superintendent, and that they don't violate any child label laws. Those are the only laws, the only laws, that relate to the 12th Grade Option Program. So the district has absolutely nothing in their policy on the website. They have nothing in the handbook. This is the district-by-district decision. So the only reason that you would not allow a student who did not pass the HESPA to take it is because the district wants to punish someone. So I can present this afterwards, but I just want to continue in saying that my daughter has worked hard her entire school career, and we have asked for help on numerous occasions, most especially this year. And in fact, this year, in one of our meetings, Mr. Goodall instructed the teacher, right there in the meeting, to move my daughter's seat. Two weeks later, we contacted the teacher. She still hadn't moved my daughter's seat. Two weeks later, we contacted Mr. Goodall, had the seat moved. The teacher moved my daughter's seat from next to her friend, which was causing a problem and disruption, a lot of talking, which is why we wanted the seat moved. She moved her to the farthest back corner of the room. So this is the respect that your teachers have for your principal and your teachers in this district, not all of them, obviously, have for the students. And this is why my wife and I are so upset with this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take that information if you want us to have it. Anyone else from the public?
Thank you.
Lara Gatz, 5 Scott Drive, speaking on behalf of Brooke Gatz, 5 Scott Drive, 16-year-old who I sent home earlier this evening. I have struggled with math my entire school career. Math has always been tough for me. It never came natural, but I always tried my hardest. I have been getting tutored since fourth grade. Every year, when NJAS scores would come back, I found that I always received around a 200 mark. One year, in fact, I even scored below and was placed in basic skills program, helping me to improve my math to a 200. Now in high school, we have, as you may know, an after-school tutoring program called CMAC. I have attended CMAC my entire high school career. I attend this regularly, as well as outside private tutoring. I don't do this for my health. I do it because I care about my education and I strive to do better. I'm asking you to please not take away senior option from someone who tries their hardest in every way possible. I didn't try to fail the HESPA, and I do not think I should be penalized for doing so. Frankly, I think the school has failed me, too. This year especially, my parents and I have asked for extra help and suggestions on how to improve my math skills. The school has done absolutely nothing to help me this year. In fact, my math teacher, and she says the name, and I don't think it's necessary, was told to move my seat by Mr. Goodall, and it took over a month to do so. Instead of moving me to the front like asked, she put me in the last row in the back of the class. Maybe, just maybe, if I was in the front of the room, and maybe, I could have received a little more help from the teacher, I would have gotten one more question right, and I wouldn't be in this position right now. I scored a 198.
Thank you. Dr. Hamilton?
Yeah, I know Mr. Goodall is here, and Mr. Goodall, I don't know if you, I can't see you, Rob. Do you need or feel obligated to make any comments in reference to this at this time? Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public forum, and I believe that there is a motion that needs to be made.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to add a special Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, June 13, at 7:00 p.m.
And the purpose of that meeting will be a closed session?
A closed session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none, then we will have a special Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, June 13, 7 o'clock p.m., here at the high school. Our next, that will be our next scheduled Board of Education meeting. Is motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Leary? Mr. Tesler? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And the meeting is adjourned.